Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The regular meeting of the Grosso Township Planning Commission will come to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of comments first before we get into the agenda. I was advised by the technical group back there that streaming, live streaming of this meeting on computers and other devices is not available this evening, but it is on television. So perhaps after the technical difficulties are worked out at the streaming company, they will be able to rebroadcast this during the week for others, so in that manner. So I hope that's clear. Second thing is we have a new Planning Commission member, John Rathel. He's not here tonight. He was appointed this Monday and on such short notice he was not available for the meeting. But he will be our ninth member and consequently counts in our quorum. With nine members, we require five, and we currently have six. Good evening, Brian. And so we are good to go. Next item is additions or deletions to the agenda. Does anybody want to change the agenda from that submitted? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved.
Motion, Steve. Support Dan. Call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item is the review of the minutes from June 18, 2018. Does anybody have any comments on those minutes? Any comments? Seeing no hands, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Still moved.
Motion from Brian, support?
Support.
Eric, call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Lori, as usual, nice job. We appreciate it. Next item is public comment. An opportunity for citizens to speak with the Planning Commission about items not on the agenda. Anybody want to talk about something that's not on the agenda? Seeing no hands, we'll move on to the first item of business, which is pre-application The applicant is Darryl Rande. The address is 27990 South Point Drive. The location legally is lot 240 of Supervisors Grosso Platt 21. The common description is the 27990 South Point Drive. This is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of South Point Drive and Broadhead. This is immediately north of the bridge that runs across the canal to get to South Point. The proposal, there currently is a 3.5 acre lot that has a single-family residence on it about 200 feet west of South Point Drive. The applicant is proposing to change the lot lines such that a new residence can be built directly along South Point in front of the existing residence. The new lot lines that the applicant is proposing identify two new parcels. The first is along South Point that would have the residence, and the second is a separate 30,000 square foot parcel to the rear of the property at the waterfront. There are various easements that are also shown on the plan for utilities and access. This is proposed as a site condominium project. The zoning for this area is single-family residential R1B zoning district. However, there is an overlay district called R1E, which applies in this case. When a new lot is being created, any new lot must be 30,000 square feet or larger. So that standard applies to this particular project. The process is defined in the Municipal Code, Chapter 71, under condominium projects. In that Municipal Code chapter, it specifies that we will use subdivision control processes, which are defined in Chapter 238 of the Municipal Code. That is a multi-step process. There are five or six different steps involving pre-application, pre-preliminary reviews, tentative preliminary reviews, board approvals, planning commission approvals. It's a long process, okay? And I won't give you all the specifics now, but it's, tonight, we're not even in this process. This is a pre-application meeting that is designed to present the project to the Planning Commission and the public and to receive feedback on that project. So there will be no vote and there will be no decisions made on this particular project tonight. So let's go first. Brian, you sent a short letter out. I know you have not reviewed this project, but is there anything you would like to?
Correct. I don't have anything to add at this time, Mr. Chair. We do obviously have the petitioner and his representative from the design team are here this evening, and I wanted to provide them with the opportunity to present the project and then have you offer up your questions that we may have at this time. I will say that for the audience as well as the commission, you're going to have to bear with us a little bit with the technology. The only access we have is the overhead camera. The overhead camera does not zoom out as far as it used to. So we're going to have some small snippets of the plan that the petitioner can slide across as they're discussing it and presenting it to you. But other than that-
Okay, well, I'm sure we'll have to live with that.
We'll make do. We'll make do.
One question, Brian. How do we get the screen active?
I will take care of that right now.
That way at least we'll be good to go.
Angie, you're good.
Oh, man, didn't even have to touch it. That's great.
I did not win.
Okay. Mr.-
I would not be here had I won.
Mr. Rande.
I'm Mr. Rande.
Did I pronounce that correctly, I hope?
Randy.
Randy? Okay, sorry about that. Okay, welcome to the Planning Commission tonight. Are you going to be presenting your applicant?
I'll be presenting. Tim Grosskloss on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, Mr. Grosskloss, can you give your address, please, for our records?
Yes, 2222 East River Road.
Please introduce your project.
This is an application for a two-site condominium. Currently, this site is two individual tax-deeded lots. So two houses, another house can be built on this today without any application, what have you. Our purpose in making this a two-site condo is to give this rear unit access to the water. So we have a project just like this on Hawthorne at West River, where there's two houses, one behind the other. One happens to be my old house and it has access to the water. The zoning ordinance hasn't changed since that was approved, and it's basically the same project. Other than that, I don't know what I can add, unless you have some questions.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what. Let's find out if anybody in the audience has any questions. As a matter of fact, I'll bring it back to the commission first because that might help to identify a little more about this project. Let's start down here with Uda.
I don't have anything to start.
Okay. Mr. Ranka.
Just a point of reference, and it's something that's, I hadn't looked in the site planned condo in quite a while, and you've explained that you want to do it so that the second unit can have access to the water. But what other, I guess ramifications, I'm not sure if it's a question for Brian or for Chairman, does that come along with?
Well, at this time, like I said, I've not done a thorough review of this yet, so I apologize. It's not something-
Don't apologize. It's pre-application. It's okay.
I haven't given it enough a look to really determine what the issues are or are not. The couple of things that did jump out just in sort of getting started, having a disconnected waterfront access is highly unusual. I do understand it was done before in a different project, and again, having not done a review at this point, I couldn't tell you if it's permissible or not at this point. That's kind of what we need to start getting the questions laid out and start getting some answers to the questions. Hopefully that helps a little.
It does. I didn't mean to blindside you if you think that's what I was doing, but the other question is, could the same thing be accomplished with an easement? Or a series of easements?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Again, I'd have to look at that, but I don't believe that we could connect the frontage, have essentially a stacked lot, and then an easement gaining access to the water. I don't believe so.
If I may, the whole purpose of doing this site condo is that the two units are considered one for zoning purposes, and that's what allows them to have this water access and a dock. You can't make an easement and add a dock, you know, it has to meet the requirements then of a single-family house. So this would allow them to have their own dock.
Change to be seen. We'll evaluate it. Uda.
Well, Eric's question raised another question for me, because I know on the plan there is a small rectangle placed off to the side represented as Unit 2. I'm assuming that that's then the extent of the waterfront access for Unit 2, or does it extend for the entire waterfront?
No, you're correct. That little captioned-off piece, which is 50 feet wide, they show it as 525.66, but that's mostly underwater. So it does give them room to have a dock, and then there's a, there is an easement for ingress egress along the road right-of-way so they can walk to that.
And Brian, does that change how you look at the front lot in terms of waterfront zoning regulations? If the property now, which as an independent lot, would not be considered a waterfront lot? If you connect it now to a waterfront lot, does it now also have to follow the same?
The waterfront piece itself? Yeah, it would be subject, anything that would occur on that would be subject to Article 17 for your waterfront regulations.
Hey, Uda.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Eric, anything else?
No.
Mr. Lemoine.
Thank you for your time tonight. A quick question, and it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but would be curious if that is a public road end, and does that extend into any of those lines that are drawn on the document today?
On Broadhead, we're obviously talking.
Yes.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you. This does, I mean, their drawing shows right-of-way line going all the way to the water. I'd have to pull out the road ends file to see exactly what the status is of that.
Yeah, I can tell you that that is the lot line, and it doesn't encroach on the roadway at all or the road end. That would remain vacant. It's kind of a tree parcel right now.
Thank you. Dan.
Being that this is becoming a condo development, would an association be formed, and would the association be responsible for the maintenance of the property, in particular, the maintenance of the waterfront edge?
Yes, and I've prepared condo documents and have provided them to the township in PDF form. So just like any other condominium, the maintenance of that association would be required.
Brian?
I have nothing more to add at this time.
Okay. Well, I have a number of issues. First, let's talk about the lot that you're showing there at the rear.
That's-
Point 607. Your interpretation and my interpretation of lot area is considerably different. Lot area, as defined in the ordinance, only counts land which is above the high-water mark. So in essence, what you're proposing here is three-quarters underwater as a separate lot. And according to R1E standards, to have another lot has to be 30,000 square feet, where you can't count 25,000 square feet of underwater. The ordinance precludes that. That's point one. Point two, so look at the definition of lot area and you'll see what I'm talking about. The second point-
If I may, John, Unit 1, including the underwater area, is 100,030 square feet.
Correct.
So if you subtract off the underwater portion, you're still in excess of the 30,000.
Not on the small portion that you've got identified as ownership of the front lot.
There's-
You're wanting, no, I'm sorry. You're creating lots, subject to R1E standards. That's my interpretation, okay? This is going to come down the line and it'll get ultimately resolved by this commission. But reading the ordinance, that is not illegal lot. Moving on to the front. Can you slide it over, please? Taking a look at the existing lot that's there right now. It has the house on it. That lot has three fronts. It has a front along South Point. It has a front along Broadhead. It has a front along the river. There is one side lot, and that is the lot which is immediately to the north, where the dimension is 13 feet or something like that. I can't really see it from where I'm at. The point of that is that the analogy for this, when you put another house in front of it, what you're talking about with a house in front of another house essentially is the same as what we have along East River Road with the French lots. Where one house has frontage on the river, the other house has 20 feet of driveway access to the rear, and the house is built behind it. Long, thin, narrow lots that get split, okay? In those designs, the rear house is treated as a front. Why is it that way? Because you want maximum distance between the rear of the house and the front and the front of the house and the rear, okay? You have made the interpretation in this drawing that that second house, the front of that second house that faces, of the original house that faces South Point now becomes a side yard. So instead of having 40 feet of setback, you now have 26, okay? That is an interpretation which is inconsistent with the manner in which we have handled lots of this fashion. And from my perspective, that needs to be 40 feet. 40 feet of property line. This is just my opinion.
We disagree with that.
I understand you do, because you put the plan together. I have other issues. The next issue is, in looking at the property, you've got this corner whacked off for an easement on the front lot. The only reason that's there is because of a driveway. If that driveway, okay, if you're going to all this effort to create another lot, there's no reason whatsoever to encumber that with a driveway there. That driveway should be moved to the pieces of property where the house is at. It's not proper to have an artificial easement like that for sheer convenience. The other easement that you show, the utilities, is perfectly fine. That's what an easement is for, not for the convenience or the cost reduction for the The last point I would make is if you look at the manner in which houses are developed along South Point, all the way down the line, there are all lots exactly like this, right on down the line, okay? Deep lots, wide lots, homes setback 250 feet away from the roadway, all lined up according to the way the houses are supposed to be lined up with the zoning ordinance location standards. This stands out as being radically different.
Well, I would-
And it is in fact a stacked lot, and in my mind inconsistent with the rest of that neighborhood. And that is a factor in the way I'm going to judge this. How others judge this, it's up to the individual commissioners.
I would-
But that is my opinion, and that's what it is.
That's fine, but I'll point out that at the end of South Point-
There, it's Broadhead.
No, at the north end of South Point, we do have houses there. That front on Grow Road.
There's one right on the corner of Grow Road, and I was on the commission when that came through. So I know all about that one.
So the difference here is that Broadhead, it has two streets, not just one, like the in-between houses. And across Broadhead, we have six houses-
Correct.
-on a lot this size.
Correct. And your point is?
So it's a better use of the land to use two lots because they're accessible.
The best use of the land is the way the land is defined for use in the zoning ordinance. That is the way, that is the best and proper use of the land. And this is not a debate tonight. This is a pre-application where opinions are expressed.
Mm-hmm, and I express mine, too.
So at this point, is there anybody in the audience who would care to comment on this project?
Can I comment?
Yeah, just one second. Anybody who wants to speak?
Can I?
Yes, come on up, please, if you would, and give us your name and address so that we can record it properly for the record.
Susie Harrison, 8597 Mathias, Grosso.
Okay, one more time. Speak into the microphone, please.
Susie Harrison, 8597 Mathias, Grosso. And I may be wrong in your interpretation, but I was under the understanding that this is a separate legal description. This is not all this one contiguous lot. It is a separate legal description. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would care to speak on this topic? Okay, your comments, please.
I'm Darryl Rande, I'm the owner of the property right now. Just to make a point is that this is already split. That's already been done and recorded. The split's been done. That's something we already done a long time ago. This became a zero. The property is changing to a two-site condo. We aren't looking to have a split change, not moving this property line. You see right here, that's where it already exists.
Black line, that is already part of the legal description. We're not moving that at all. That's already exists. What we're adding on is the part on the water. That's the part that's different. So just to make a clarification, I appreciate-
That is an important clarification. What is that? Say that again, please.
This is two legal lots where two houses can be built today by just filling out a building permit. So the issue isn't can we build two houses? We can, according to the ordinance.
That is correct. If that is already a legally split lot, then that is correct. If it's not a legally split lot-
It is legally split, and what we're doing is combining it all into one parcel to give water access. One-site condo development.
I wanted to make sure I made that clarification.
Sorry, I couldn't hear that.
I wanted to make sure that I made that clarification, because it didn't seem like it was coming across.
I certainly-
Mine doesn't show that.
Um, yeah, I think we have a legal in here that, here's the, yeah, if we look on what page it is. You can see that you tax IDs-
Well, see, this is what I was looking at. I'm looking at property description on the information that was submitted. It doesn't say two lots. It says one lot, 152 feet by 1,006.
Well, that's the site condo dimensions.
Okay, this obviously needs to be clarified and explored further. I had one other point that I wanted to make relative to that. And again, this goes back to the 1990s when we were dealing with stacked lots on East River. It was a requirement at that time that we had some deal, some requirement for landscaping that we had between the front of the one and the back of the other. Now, I can't recall the specifics on it because that's 25 years, but that needs to be explored. Again, the idea was to mitigate for the people in the rear looking at the backside of the house from the front.
Right now, along the back of the property, if the back of it's the Unit 2 section right along here, this is fenced, and there's a hedge along the back of it. So there's already a fence along the back of this line right here. I see what you're saying, there'd have to be something along the back of this house then. I appreciate that. We'll look it up in the plans and we have the kind of association rules that we're currently developing. You can always adjust those.
We're not opposed to anything like that. You know, that's why we're here.
Okay, well, the concept needs to be fleshed out. Obviously, more information needs to be provided so that this is clarified as to what's what. The idea of the creation of the lot in the rear for waterfront access certainly is a concern. Those complete my comments. Anybody else have any other comments?
One other comment I had is, our ordinance is all based on, you know, front, rear, and sides, and I just, I'm just, we really need to clarify what's the front of these properties. I mean, the way it's drawn here, the front would be Broadhead Road.
We actually have two fronts with South Point and Broadhead. So those are both considered front yards, and the waterfront yard, I guess, is considered front as well.
Well, you can consider one a corner lot, but if we're adding the property out front, the other property is no longer on a corner lot. It's definitely be unique.
Well, it'd be a corner lot in the fact that we have the front on the water and the front on Broadhead.
This would be exactly like the houses that are on Grow Road at South Point, would be the exact mirror of that, except this is only two, not three. They have three on the other end.
Okay, any other comments? Any other points you'd like to make? Any other comments from the commission? Hearing none, then we'll move on. Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. And I'll move to the next topic. I got it. Which is a working session for Bayview waterfront rezoning discussion. Little background on this first, for a number of months, the Planning Commission has been studying improvements to the zoning ordinance. The goal is to align the ordinances with reality. Basically, in some cases, the ordinances came long after the island was, sections of the island were defined and lots were specified, and the overlay zoning that was put into them doesn't match what was actually the development plan from years before. So the result is, is that houses and garages and these sorts of things, accessory buildings, end up being non-conforming. And this forces the residents, if they want to make an improvement, make an expansion, make some sort of other major change, to confront the issue that they have to go in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals to get permission before they can do anything. This is unnecessary if the zoning ordinances fit the area. So with that in mind, several years ago, the Planning Commission took a look at the situation on the east side of Hickory Island. This is basically the Hickory Island Company. There specifically, in conjunction with the management of the Hickory Island Company, we worked out and created what was called a new zoning district called R1F. It was created to match that particular historic area, where the most obvious difference is on the Hickory Island side, you see garages that are against the street, okay? You won't find that anywhere else. Those, under the old ordinance, used to be non-conforming. But by, again, bringing the ordinance to fit reality, okay, those people no longer have non-conforming buildings. That's just one example of probably eight or 10 different things that we changed in conjunction with that organization to move ahead. That's been in place now for a number of years, and we've continued to look at things, and it came to us as a recommendation, I think from the Zoning Board of Appeals, if I'm not correct. I'm not correct, that we have many of the same issues that Hickory Island had on the waterfront properties specific on the west side of Hickory Island. So, where we addressed the east side, we did nothing on the west side. So, the planning commission said, let's gather some data. Let's see what we've got. Okay, what exactly is there? So, our planner, Brian, did a complete survey of that area, seeing what was, what was built, what were dimensions, what were setbacks, what were building sizes, all of this stuff. And he prepared detailed summary tables for us to look at. And from that, we were able to discern what logically ought to be changed in the zoning ordinance to reflect what's there. Recognizing that, that not all change is good. There were some things that we saw that needed to stay. Okay, other things which were clearly, well, marginal, you might say. We said, let's, let's consider change. So, we put together some ordinance changes. And those were reviewed on a preliminary basis with this commission a couple of months back. And we laid out, we laid out a plan to kind of roll this out to the community, to those people specifically impacted by this. We recognize that when anybody talks about changing zoning, okay, that can be kind of scary. Because you're sitting there saying to yourself, you know, this is my property, okay, and I don't want anybody messing with it. This is going to cause me difficulties or cause me problems. And so, citizens, we knew, are going to be concerned about this. In the case of working with Hickory Island, we had an organization to deal with. Okay, we had, we had representatives from that side who came and sat down with us and worked with us. There is no organization on the other side of the island. Okay, so, so, you know, we, what we did was the best we could do internally with ourselves, with the information that Brian gave us. And now, we're ready to move to the next step. And the next step is to lay this out as a vision. Brian will give us a summary of the things that are proposed and why they're proposed. Okay, and then we'll have a talk about it. Okay, nothing is going to be decided tonight. This is not part of the formal zoning change process. That, that won't even begin until we're confident that, that we've reviewed this with, with folks, we've got input, and this commission is confident that what we're doing for that community is exactly correct. So, I hope that mitigates some of the fear you might have. We did send out letters. We hope that we would get a response. I'm pleased to see that people are here. This is good. This helps us. So, on that note, I will stop talking, finally, and ask Brian to come on up and share a presentation. And then, we're going to talk about it at, with the citizens.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the introduction and definitely thanks to the residents for coming out tonight. I know it was probably only a week or even less notice on that letter, so it's great to have this many people show up tonight. So, let me just jump into the presentation. I've got a, this thing goes up somehow. We'll just deal with it. So, I do have a summary of, a lot of which John just covered, actually. So, we should have compared notes before I, I did the presentation. But, so, as far as graphically, just to give everyone an understanding, so, this is Lower Hickory. So, this area in orange, which I know doesn't show up well because of all the extended purple outlines, but this is the area that was previously studied. And then, R1F was created and then applied to those parcels. The remainder of Lower Hickory, the Bayview properties, is still under R1B, single-family residential zoning, including both the waterfront and the non-waterfront properties. I do want to make it clear that what we've studied at this point is only the waterfront parcels. So, up to this point, the proposal does not include any changes proposed to the non-waterfront parcels because the development patterns on the internal properties is slightly different than those on the waterfront with very narrow properties, very deep properties, and also the waterfrontage obviously being the other difference. So, some of this you've already heard. So, several years ago, we did a study on Hickory, led to the formation of R1F. It was suggested that at some point in time, we look at Bayview and do a similar study, which is what we've now done. So, as I mentioned, currently, Bayview, all of Bayview is zoned R1B. R1B is a zoning designation that permits single-family residential uses, requires 80-foot lots with 16,000 square foot lot areas, and then establishes maximum coverage ratios. So, the FAR, in this case, is the floor area ratio. That's the usable floor area of your residence. So, that would include the first floor and second floor of a two-story home, but it does not include things like the basement or the garage space. The LCR, or lot coverage ratio, if you think of it in terms as kind of the footprint of your home and/or garage and/or an accessory building, that's the LCR, the lot coverage. Does not take into account usable floor area of, say, a second story, but takes into account the ground floor area of a home and a garage, if there is one. So, based on current R1B standards, there are 29 properties along the waterfront on Bayview. 24 of those 29 do not provide 80-foot lots. 21 of them do not provide the 16,000 minimum square footage. 13 exceed the established floor area ratio maximum, and 12 exceed the established lot coverage ratio maximum. We did take another look and included in the study the fact that 12 of those residents do also include detached, street-front accessory buildings, which, as John mentioned, was something that is really prevalent on the East Riverside, not quite as prevalent on the Bayview side, but is another level or another layer of non-conformity, so to speak. So, there are 12 of those 29, at least when we started the study. And I don't think any of them have, have been demolished. It has taken us a bit of time to get through the study, though. So, last count, there were 12. When we applied the R1F standards, or the, which were originally developed for the East Riverside, we found a reduction in non-conformity just by simply applying the new dimensional standards. So, R1F is 40-foot lots, 10,000 square foot lot area, maximum floor area ratio and lot coverage ratio are the equivalent. They're both at 25% of the lot that could be covered in terms of your usable home size or your ground floor area of your home and your garage. So, upon application of that, we reduce the lot size non-conformity from 24 to 6. There are 6 that are less than 40 feet. When we apply the lot area, we reduce from 21 out of compliance to 9 out of compliance. When we apply the increased floor area ratio of 25%, that reduces our 13 non-conforming to 9. And then, when we apply the 25% lot coverage, that takes us from 12 down to 1. So, there is a pretty big improvement, at least in terms of reducing the amount of non-conformity in particular with the, the lot coverage and the lot widths. The other thing that has come up as part of it is R1F, as currently written, does permit some level of street-front detached accessory buildings. So, all those garages that you see lining East River Road on Lower Hickory, those are essentially permitted under the ordinance now, wherein every other part of the township, they are, they are prohibited. I've got more on the garage thing as we continue because I know there was, we did already at this point, the last time we presented this to commission, we did get some resident feedback, and there was a concern about potentially allowing that by right so that other property owners could do the same. So, at this point, I think that may be taken out of any draft changes, but I wanted to put that out there for now because it was at least part of the study.
Brian, before you go any further...
Absolutely.
Just real quick, real quick question. So, by taking someone's property from a non-conformance to a conformance, what does that do for that particular property owner? What, what does it allow them to do where they would not be allowed if they're in a non-conforming lot?
So, it realistically, it opens, it would make the homeowner's life a lot easier if they wanted to remodel and/or expand their structures. Any of those non-conform, any that are non-conforming buildings would essentially be restricted to external expansions or modifications, and ultimately, they would likely end up in front of the zoning board of appeals. That's what we saw on the East Riverside. That's what led to the study was we just, I wouldn't say ZBA was overwhelmed with cases on East River, but there were quite a few. That's what led to sort of the initial, many years ago, that's why we got this whole thing started, was kind of an inordinate number of ZBA cases in one small geographic portion of the township.
And inordinate amount of people having to go through that strife to get something done that their neighbors already have.
Correct. Yeah, it really, if you have a non-conforming residence, for the most part, other than some extreme circumstances, you're going to be limited to internal remodel renovation. You know, you can do, you can do things inside, you can remodel your kitchen, you can change your floor plan, but you cannot do anything that makes the structure larger. So, that includes height, that includes any expansions outward, then there are, there are strict limitations on what one can do at that point.
I think it should also be pointed out with ZBA that, you know, it's costly. It's $500.
Yes.
Second thing is, it takes time because you have to get on your schedule. So, there's, there's delays in what you might wish to accomplish. And then, finally, third, there's uncertainty. Zoning Board of Appeals is just as likely to say no as they are yes, depending on what is, is proposed. So, again, if you don't have to ask a question, you know, you're potentially better off.
So, what I, what I wanted to do next was just throw this in, and I, I tried to quickly get off the addresses so as to not make this too specific to anyone. I do have the information. If any of the residents are interested, we can provide the full, the full table of data to you. I know it's kind of hard to see on the screen.
Brian, could you just read off, what are the headings on the top so that they know what's on the table? Because it is the basis for the slides that you just previously saw from Brian.
Correct. Yeah, so what I, there I go again. It's up there again. So, column, the first column you see is the width of the lot, and everything that is highlighted in red, hopefully you can at least make out the red-black distinction, those are all the non-conformities. So, those are all the less than 80s, 24 total.
24 lots total?
Out of 29 total, yes. 24 deficient.
29 total lots were evaluated, all the waterfront lots on that side of the island?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Lot area is the next column. Maybe that helps. Again, anything in black is compliant, anything in red is non-conforming. And again, that's where we get our, we have our 21 out of 29 currently non-conforming. The floor area is the next column, and then the ground floor area is the column after that. So, these are the actual sizes of the homes per township assessor records. These are how we calculate these floor area ratio and lot coverage ratio percentages. So, the FAR, again, is the floor area divided by the lot area.
Brian, please explain to them, what is floor area ratio? Why is it there?
So, floor area ratio is a limitation on the usable floor area one can have in a residence. The intent was to establish maximums that would make sure homes were in keep, or new homes or expansions were in keeping with the established character of a neighborhood. In other words, the cap is actually, it's either the max at 22, or it's a calculation based upon the surrounding homeowners, which could make it even less. So, in some instances, the 22 is the extreme max. In some instances, the, the size of surrounding homes might reduce somebody and limit them to, to an even smaller coverage ratio.
And in even simpler terms, if you've heard the term Bigfoot house. A Bigfoot house is where you have a small lot and you completely fill it with a house. And you go through a neighborhood, and they have all these normal houses, and then you have this gigantic house sitting on it, sitting on a small lot. That's what this is meant to, to manage.
Right, again, it was, it's kind of a neighborhood character test.
Exactly. It's a neighborhood character test based on the average of everything that's in the area.
And so, again, same, same concept. So, of the, with a, with a flat maximum, the capped maximum of 22, there are 13 residents currently that would exceed that floor area ratio. The lot coverage being similar, but again, being the ground floor area only in terms of coverage. So, garages do come into play, whether attached or detached. And we have 12 of the 29 currently non-conforming. The one, the one thing I want to point out, just because we led it with, with ZBA being an opportunity if somebody wanted to expand, there's, there are even, there's a different process and potentially more restrictions for the floor area and lot coverage ratio. So, the planning commission has the initial authority to review a request to exceed the maximum floor area or lot coverage ratio. But planning commission's authority is limited to a 5% above maximum. So, planning commission could hear something that was up to 5% over. Anything that's beyond that 5% then becomes another variance situation. Thankfully, we've generally been able to avoid that since these ratios were put in place. But just to give you an idea, there is a residence whose ratio, and I'm just going to single this person out, that's why I took the addresses off. But, so, so a 35.9% floor area ratio, if they wanted to expand that residence, they're looking at the need for a variance. There's just no way around it. Anything they want to do that increases that ratio, they are so far above the maximum, they're, they're in position. So, that ironically ends up being one where even with the proposed changes or the potential changes, the increase to 25% with planning commission description of another 5% would not help that residence in particular for floor area. It would help it for lot coverage. You can see lot coverage is at 24.5%. So, there is, there would be potentially some opportunities to expand the garage or nonusable space on that residence if R1F were applied to this particular neighborhood.
I think it's important to point out that people that find themselves in the situation, you know, don't look at the planning commission, commission any differently than the ZBA. They basically don't want to be it either.
Sure.
Okay, so, now, whether, whether it's coming to see us or going to see ZBA, it's a, it's a complicated, cumbersome, timely step.
Yes, sometimes necessary, but we, obviously, when, when staff and I meet with, with residents and developers, we always encourage people, the, the more you follow the rules and the closer to compliance you come, the, the less cumbersome your process is. So, if you can avoid ZBA, you should avoid ZBA. ZBA is there for people that just absolutely have no other option.
Now, Brian, share with the people, one of the concerns I'm sure that people would have is, is okay, now, these standards change, and all of a sudden, someone can now really do something drastic. All right, how, how do we mitigate that concern?
What, I guess, what would be the drastic concern?
Well, for example, you know, we, we changed to the R1F standard, and the lot coverage ratio and the floor area ratio now are different. Now, does that mean that the next day, someone can look out there and see a house is twice as big? I mean, that's ridiculous analogy, but...
Understood.
But from, you know, an owner's perspective...
Not directly, not directly, but it, you know, the, the idea is that it would allow, given the fact that nearly half of the homes already exceed the maximum, it would provide opportunities for those folks that, that wanted to expand. I would not expect, quite frankly, Bayview has been really quiet permit-wise. We, I don't think we've seen a new project, and I'm looking at Lori, but I don't think we've had an addition expansion for residents on Bayview in, in at least a couple of years. So...
But the standards that are set for both those ratios, as far as lot width, everything else that's in here is consistent with the neighborhood as it currently exists. And, and corrects some of the issues, but not necessarily all of the issues.
That's correct. Yeah, we're, the, the reality is, anytime you do a lot study or a non-conforming study like this, the reality is we're never going to eliminate non-conformity. Our goal is to reduce it to the greatest extent possible without going too far.
Without impacting the neighborhood.
Absolutely. In order to, in order to, you know, create this, so the, the highest floor area ratio in this neighborhood is 36.7%. So, in order to make everything conform, we would have to set the bar at 36.7. Well, then, for somebody who is currently at 9.8, that means they can essentially quadruple the size of their home. That's not, that's not what we're looking to do here. We're looking to create regulations that more closely resemble how the neighborhood has developed historically. So, there would... So there would still be a cap, and as drafted under the ordinance, currently, R1F caps at 25%.
Okay, good.
So again, I've got that table if anybody wants to see it, or if the residents want, we can have Lori provide that to you at a later date. So what I wanted to get into now was just an overview of sort of where that, so that's where we've been, those were our findings up to this point. So as John had mentioned at the outset, that led to us looking at the zoning ordinance text, what changes would need to be made. A straight application of R1F to this neighborhood really wouldn't make sense. There are some modifications that are necessary, because again, R1F was explicitly written for the Hickory Island Association or Hickory Island Company, I forget which is the appropriate description, but I think, I think you know what I'm talking about. So the East Riverside, there were some things that were explicitly written into that ordinance based on their association rules. Obviously, those association rules do not apply to the Bayview side, so there is the need to modify. So for starters, section 3.2 of the ordinance, which is really just the intent of each single-family zoning district, the intent as currently written of R1F is specific to East Riverside. So we need to make some minor adjustments to that if we were to apply this. Similarly, 3.5 provides the dimensional standards, which we've already discussed in part at least in terms of lot sizes and coverages, and there is a specific reference in the footnotes of that section to how Hickory Island measures shoreline setbacks. So conventionally throughout the island, it's always an average shoreline setback. The intent is to try to keep homes generally in line, not allow somebody to build way out past somebody, block their water views. On Hickory Island, it's done a little differently. There's an average, or there's a measurement to the waterfront from the street front back. Obviously, that doesn't apply to the Bayview side, so we need to make a distinction between the two neighborhoods as it relates to shoreline setback. As it's currently proposed, we wouldn't propose any changes to how shoreline setback is currently applied to the Bayview side. So that's not something we are looking to change, but it would require a modification to the text for consistency. Same with Article 17, that's where we regulate our waterfront structures, so docks, if you had a waterfront pool, if you had any other type of lifting device on your dock, that's all regulated by Article 17. The changes to the text related to R1F were again, very specific to how the Hickory Island Association governs their properties when it comes to waterfront structures. They do not permit waterfront pools, they do not permit, I believe lifting devices, I think is off the list. There's some additional lighting provisions where they're much more restrictive than other parts of the township. So again, we're looking to make the distinction between the two neighborhoods so that the change proposed would not have an effect on the Bayview side. So we're not looking to apply regulations specific to Hickory Island to the Bayview side. Hopefully, that makes sense. 1911, this is for the accessory buildings, so this, as I mentioned earlier, there are 12 out of 29 that have a nonconforming detached accessory building in a street front yard, which is not permitted, other than an R1F. We did, with the ordinance subcommittee, we did play around with that section quite a bit to see if there was a way to come up with a provision that would better fit the residences on the Bayview side, whereas the East Riverside, they're pretty much all two-car garages pushed right up close to the roadway. That's not really the same character as the Bayview side. Some of the buildings on Bayview are more like storage sheds, they're not full-on two-car garages, and while they're in the street front yard, they're not typically pushed as far up to the road as they are on the East Riverside. I did mention earlier, after that last presentation, we did receive a letter from, I believe it was two residents on Bayview, I think it was one letter, I think it was a couple, I think it was a husband-wife, but regardless, we did receive a letter basically saying, you know, they weren't so sure about that, and pretty strongly objecting to that idea with the thought of the potential impacts to the non-waterfront properties. So all of a sudden, if we start to fill the street front side with detached buildings, what do the views look like from the other side of the street? Are we going to start blocking, you know, the limited views they already have? Would, you know, essentially, if all 29 homes had one of those structures, that's going to have potentially a detrimental impact on the neighborhood, which we're looking to avoid. So as we had last discussed with the commission, we were going to take that out, and the text amendment to 1911 would still not allow street front accessory buildings even for the Bayview side. So that was something we kicked around quite a bit as of last discussion, that was kind of where we left it, just so, again, so the residents are aware. And then the last part of the process would be to the map, which I showed up front here somewhere. I seriously lost the map. Technology grade. There's the map. So the last part of the process, again, if the township is to pursue this, would also then include the rezoning of these waterfront properties to this R1F designation. As John mentioned, you know, we're trying to get the residents involved earlier in the process. This is not a public hearing. Any changes to ordinance up to and including the rezoning of the property or rezoning of any properties will require formal public hearings, it'll require notification to the landowners and/or occupants of those buildings. So we really wanted to sort of lay this whole thing out, make sure we address any questions, any concerns that the residents have. This is, this affects you, this is your property, and as John mentioned, anytime change is mentioned, that's kind of a scary thing, and we understand that. So that's why we're trying to go through this process, to invite you in and present our findings to you, show you kind of what we've done to date, and hopefully answer your questions. And if we don't answer them all here tonight, we'll make ourselves available at staff hours, or planning commission can schedule a second workshop and have you all come back, and we can revisit this to kind of keep working together with you. Certainly don't want to fight with you to push this forward. We want to make sure there's understanding and that this is something that the neighborhood is interested in before we turn it into something more formal.
Thank you, Brian. Just additional comment here, you know, we keep referencing, you know, the Hickory Island Company and their standards. Hickory Island had standards and rules for things which were tighter than grossed-out township ordinances. For example, Brian mentioned dock lighting, okay? That was something that Hickory Island had, which basically was tighter than grossed-out township ordinances, and so that is what they used. When it came, when it, the other side, the Bayview side, was developed under grossed-out township ordinances for lighting, for example, on the docks. Those are not changing, okay? Everything that's not, was not specifically covered by Brian, you know, is an existing grossed-out township ordinance that you've been living in under for years, since you've been there. Those don't change. So absolutely do not think that we're simply picking up Hickory Island Company and dropping it in on your side, because we're not. Now, a lot of it was screened out, pulled out. Okay, now, I think at this point, let's get some public input. People with questions and comments, what I'd like you to do, please, is raise your hand, and I'll go around the room, and when you come up, please, give us your name and your address and your questions, and again, if we can answer them right now, we certainly will, if we can't, we'll get back to you. Please, welcome.
How you doing? Chris Hancock, 29874 Bayview, president of the Homarden Park subdivision, which is the 35 residences there, we kind of govern the road, our association's more geared for the road.
The private drive?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Not so much governing like you said, you know, the lights, the, all the other items. So I guess as far as communication goes, I could be a good point contact, and I can communicate back to the other residences by mass email, so that might help out a little bit in that fashion, it sounded like you weren't really aware of us.
No, I didn't.
We have a full board, we have five board members, so.
Okay, well, that would be terrific if we had a partner. It'd be wonderful.
Is that just communication, or does that group speak for everybody then, too?
Well, I mean, no, we don't certainly speak for everybody. Like I said, we're kind of road-oriented, and that's our bylaws, are more geared towards the road. I don't want to impose anything to any of these people, I don't think that we're going to be making decisions based on all 35 residences, everybody hears their own. Pardon me?
What was the name of the association again?
Homarden Park subdivision.
Homarden?
Homarden.
H-O-M-A-R-D-E-N.
And you want an email address?
Yeah, we could, why don't you provide that later in private?
Sure.
Along with the phone number.
So I mean, I don't have a whole lot of questions right now, this is all new to me, and a lot of the residents here, I'm sure, do have some questions. Personally, I think, you know, I see the good and badness, I mean, it seems like we're going to possibly have some freedoms here. I mean, I built 13 years ago, had to come before this commission, so I'm acutely aware of how arduous that process was. So it'd be nice to relieve some of that, some aspects, but I see the fear of it, too. I don't want to see garages built towards the road and accessory buildings built up close to the road myself. I kind of like the look of our subdivision, and anything that alter that scares us, scares me, anyway. It is a unique little place, and I love living there, and I love the way it looks. That being said, I don't hate the process of having to, you know, be notified when anything happens over there, so that we all, as neighbors, get to have a little bit of input. So, but everybody here may have a different opinion, which we all have to listen to and respect, and I'm one of 35, so I'd be happy to be a point contact for all of our residents if they so desire to have that, or if they want to speak independently, they certainly may. That's all I have. Thanks.
Oh, very good, thank you. So please get with Brian after the meeting and share your information. Okay, and I think it's important to note that the garage front issue was of critical concern in his review.
Absolutely.
Additional hands, please, come on, who else would like to speak? Hi.
I'm Paige Miller, 29900 Bayview.
Welcome.
Thank you. The only quick comment that I wanted to make was, we were also relatively, we built our home 13 years ago, and we did an addition, which was completed in 2015. So I've been through the experiences recently, and I think I caught my house before he whipped the addresses away, and I had one kind of question slash comment for you on that, based on the experience that I went through when we did it, and that is, you might want to double-check the lot measurements that you're using for the areas. Because what happened when we applied to do our addition was, it was at first rejected because they said we weren't meeting the lot coverage ratio requirements, and then we asked to see the calculations, and then we looked at it, and we said, that's not our lot size. And what had happened was, they used a line that was somewhere in some drawing somewhere, and they were saying, and when they originally calculated it, they assumed our lot was 210 feet deep, when really, it's 300 feet deep, or some number like that. And so when I saw the number that was up there for my ratio, I said, they don't have my right square footage on my lot again.
Uh-oh.
So I just thought, you might want to double-check whoever did the lot ratios and those calculations, and make sure, because our lot, when we got approved to do our addition, we were totally in compliance with the coverage ratios and the area ratios. What was up there said that we were not. So I just wanted, somebody might want to double-check those.
Absolutely, we will.
That's my only comment, all right?
Thank you very much, that's a great point.
Mr. Sheriff, if I may? Yeah, could we just, after the meeting or when we wrap up, can I just make sure I get your contact info, too? Because we, I want to, I think I mentioned this earlier, but everything we prepared in that table is directly from the township assessor, so that's what the township assessor has on file for your lots and your homes.
They have to go back to an older one and say...
Sure. Well, and that's, depending upon when that home was built and/or modified, about 10 years ago, the assessor did not track lot sizes, and our best way to try to apply the ordinance establishing the ratios was to use the plat book and use maps like this to try to come up with lot areas, was not easy, nor would I consider it overly accurate, but we do have better information now, so I want to make sure we're working off of as current and accurate as information as we possibly can.
Would you come up, would you come up now and speak with Brian briefly and pass your information to him? We want to make sure, this is a very important point.
You're not getting trouble if I have a nice price.
Yeah, you got to tear down your house. My name is Jim Southwell, I live at 29792 Bayview.
Hey, Jim Southwell, did you get that, Lori? Okay, welcome, sir.
And, yeah, thank you. Just a little clarification to that point is, I've lived there 50 years, my wife has lived there 74 years.
Speak in the microphone, please, it'd help a bit.
Okay. I have lived there 50 years, my wife has lived in the same residence for 74 years, and the property has always been set up on a buildable lot lines. In our case, because we have a rather large lot, it's 100 feet from the street to 200 feet from the street. Our lot is really 310 feet deep, but the assessment is 80 by 200. So the assessment is, I mean, the size of the lot is not accurate. And so the line that you saw in your, in your map shows the 200 feet from the street, at least at our point. There are other properties that don't have that much depth, and so they can't, it can't be assessed the same way. However, on top of that, one question I have is, what is the height maximum that is allowable?
Brian?
It's currently 30 feet, and it would remain at 30 feet.
Thank you.
Okay, give your name for contact information, because we need to make sure your lot is clarified as well.
Thank you.
Okay, additional hands. Anybody else, yes, sir, come on up.
Eric Ballant, 29714 Bayview.
Welcome.
There seems to be discrepancies with the lot sizes here.
Yes.
Before you implement this, don't you think you should have it surveyed?
I don't know, that's a good question. I think that's something that'll have to be asked to the source of information for us, which was, you know, the assessor's office, you know.
Well, as you're seeing, most of these, most of the people that are up here, the dimensions are wrong, so.
Yeah, this is, I don't know what the answer is, I know that, you know, having inaccurate information doesn't cut it, so we have to find a way to get it.
It doesn't raise our taxes.
Oh, we'll just claim most if it's underwater.
Okay, I'll put that down as a question. Okay, additional hands. Anybody over here?
Mr. Sheriff, just if I could, while there's a bit of a lull, so Lori and I will speak with the township assessor when we get an opportunity, we'll take a look at the plat maps. I've gotten now a couple of addresses, we can pull the property files on, which we should have, hopefully. We have some level of property survey and drawing from when the residence was permitted and built. That should help in terms of trying to clarify this. The township assessor's information is the best information we have to go by, so if there's a flaw in how it was calculated, I'd rather know about it than not, but we've got to figure out a way to reconcile that, and...
You may also have surveys in the cases where houses were built 13 years ago.
Correct.
You'll find a lot survey as part of that survey. In order to file, you'll find a lot survey as part of that schedule.
Yep. Yeah, anything that's within the last, you know, 10 to 15 years, which again, there's going to be a limited number, but we should have pretty detailed drawings for those. Some of the older ones, we probably don't, but we'll certainly go back and we'll try to reconcile those numbers and look at the files where we do have good survey information in terms of site plans for those homes.
Okay. Additional hands, additional comments? Anybody want to speak? Well, I'll tell you what, we'll bring it back to the table right now and then we'll go back out to the audience here in a minute if maybe you have questions that'll come up after you hear us talk. Brian, you've heard the presentation, your thoughts and citizen comments?
I just want to echo everyone's comments about, thank you for coming up here and participating tonight. It's very great to hear that, the public participation. Additionally, you know, just to, my fellow commissioners want to make sure that we have the most accurate information before we move ahead on that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Brian. Dan?
The only question I had is, it is mentioned on here and it's been discussed that 12 of the 29 properties have detached accessory structures. And I guess one thing I'd like to know is how many have attached structures? I would think that's, that would be the most important because everybody wants a garage, you know, and it doesn't necessarily need to be detached.
Attached is permitted.
Okay.
So the vast majority of them have an attached garage. That's permitted by right. There's no issue with that.
Okay.
That's then just subject to principal building setbacks. The issue of conformity is when it's a detached structure in a street front yard. That's where the issue arises.
Okay, thank you.
And again, to that end, too, and I'm sorry not to belabor, to that end, they're not all garages either, which I think is important to note. Some of them are, they're, some are storage sheds, some were, you know, put it probably in the street front yard due to either not wanting to put them in the waterfront yard and blocking views or not having sufficient area to put it in the waterfront yard. I know we had at least one or two homeowners that went through the ZBA process to get small storage sheds in the street front yard because that was really the only place they could reasonably do it.
No other questions?
Okay, thank you. Steve?
Just want to say, great job to Brian. Thank you for all the time that's put on this and the commission, also to the public. Thank you for being here. It's excellent to see everybody out here just to hear what the township's thinking and to get your thoughts, your opinions. You're the folks who live there and we want to make sure we're good stewards of what we're doing in our time. So definitely, please encourage you to keep coming forward with your ideas, email them, call to the township. But this open, transparent process is what we believe in and what we'll continue to do.
Thank you, Steve. Eric?
Nothing more to add.
Buda?
Likewise, nothing more to add. Everyone said it.
All right, well, then what will happen as a result of this is that we will look at several points here that were specifically raised. The garage fronts being up against, accessory buildings up against the street. I think there was a general consensus on all of our parts that that was not going to be allowed and that if anybody wanted to build one, they would go through the old process of zoning board of appeals. That was certainly reinforced by what we heard tonight. Certainly the big issue about accuracy of information. For us to set correct standards for the numbers, okay, we have to be working from top quality information and I'm sure Brian will do that. And if necessary, you know, we'll look at, we'll look at surveys. It is one way to answer the question if there is no other. So those are key points. At this point, I do not believe that we are ready to necessarily start the process of a public hearing. I'm not sure. I think that we need one more review session on this when we get the more accurate information. And I would encourage us to go ahead and send another letter. It's going to take us, you know, it's going to take us a while to get this sorted out. Get the accurate information, re-prepare the tables and come back again. Okay? And I would like to do that in a workshop type environment. And so we would welcome you to come and see us again. We'll send a letter. Steve?
So just to, again, raise the question because I'm not the expert on it, but I think if we do go down a path of establishing a actual survey and that it's conducted, we should at least understand the ripple effects of that and if there is any downside to it or upside so that the homeowners know what the effect is if all of a sudden a formal survey is completed, that we use that information on for the data that you had presented. Because I don't know what the downside or the risk is to a homeowner there. If all of a sudden comes back and it's more square footage, less square footage, I don't know that part.
Absolutely. Well, I think, I think obviously the first, the first direction we're going to go is to, is to look closer at the information we've got and make the best use of it. And then if we still feel we have holes, then decide what the next best path would be to get it.
And we will initiate conversation with the township assessor to see if there are any, I don't know, this, you know, planning and zoning has nothing to do with taxable values. Planning commission has nothing to do with setting taxable values on properties. So I, yeah, I want to tread somewhat cautiously in terms of the information, but we will speak with the assessor as we kind of proceed through this process and we'll, again, we'll do the best we can with the information that's available. And we'll bring that back to the commission, obviously, and invite the residents back in.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, there's not a budget set, so I would not expect that we would be hiring assessors. So I don't want anyone to get their hopes up that we would be surveying your lot.
I've not had that.
I don't see that as a likely outcome.
That's not a conversation I've had with the township manager, nor is it one I want to have with the township manager. Yeah, I don't believe that would, that would ever occur. It's just, we're going to work with the information we have and if we come back and we find enough good site plan documents on file and if we find that it, that alone corrects a lot of the nonconformity, well, then we may have just concluded our study. But let's at least, let's do the research properly and present the findings so that the commission and residents can come to that conclusion.
Brian, once we have resolved the accuracy questions and we're ready to have another work session, I would like to have your slides as handouts for people coming here so they can directly reference them and mark on them as you're talking. Okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else in the audience now have any further questions or comments before we move on? Oh, yes, come on back up.
For those of neighbors that may have things that are nonconforming currently, how does the rules work if you want to, will those be grandfathered in that you're okay, that you already have this, you know, accessory structure? Or does the township ever come over and say, "Oh, well, you have to knock that down?" Or "When you sell, we don't like that?" Or will you just let it go?
Brian?
Structures that are lawfully nonconforming, you have a right to retain them. The township is not going to come in and say that you have to demolish it if it's nonconforming. The attempt of the study and potentially changing the ordinance is to reduce the number of structures that are nonconforming. So if it's brought into compliance, you don't have to worry about it.
But lawfully nonconforming though, so, yeah.
It's.
Okay. Yeah. So, yeah, okay, I got it.
It's terminology. If you, if it's nonconforming, if it's.
I've got a friend.
Here's the reality.
Someone told you you could do it and you're okay, but.
If it's illegal, it's illegal. It's not nonconforming, if that makes sense. If it's nonconforming, you have rights to retain it. We've not come across anything in our records indicating that any of those structures and/or homes are illegal or were illegally built. That's not where we're trying to go with this.
Okay. All right, just checking.
Okay, additional questions? Yes, come on back up again. Just wait a second, it's okay. Talk into the microphone.
29714 Bayview. I also have a question about nonconforming. I had the inspector out to my house a few years ago about my garage. I wanted to make it larger. He said I had a setback from the street. Do I have a setback of these, the garages that we have that are not attached to those nonconforming from the setback or just because it's a separate structure?
It's the yard location. So you're not allowed an accessory structure detached in a street front yard. So it's not necessarily their setback, it's their placement between the principal building and the street front lot line.
Well, if I wanted to increase the square footage of my home in order to come up here to the zoning board of appeals, would I have to remove that garage in order to get a variance to increase the square footage?
Not necessarily, but it would affect, if the building remained and you're seeking to increase your lot coverage or you're, essentially at that point, an accessory building would only count against your lot coverage and you're looking to increase your lot coverage, that building is calculated as part of that ratio. So if you removed it, you would potentially offset what you were going to build. If you kept it, you're potentially, if you exceed the maximum, you're going to be in front of planning commission or in front of zoning board of appeals.
If I could make it nonconforming easily, I would just build to the garage, but then I'd have to get into my lot coverage.
Additional hands? Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Dave Holsworth, 29816 Bayview Drive, 29808 Bayview Drive. I just want to, can we get a copy of that stuff, that thing you sort of, all the noncompliance stuff? Can I get a copy of that? Does that take some time? I appreciate that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, we can do that, but recognize that it's going to, it's going to change once we find the lot dimension width issues.
Chris Hancock again. When will we hear back from you again? I mean, what will be the next step that we have to be aware?
The next step is that you will receive a letter from us that's saying, "Hey, we're going to have a meeting. Come on down." When that exactly will be, I can't say. We're meeting, we're meeting approximately five times a year.
And after we meet, I'm sure this will come up in our next meeting, if we have feedback and input to you of something that we may or may not want to have included in this rezoning, would that be something that this board would entertain?
I didn't quite hear the last part of that sentence.
If we come up with something that we all think that should be a part of this zoning change, is that something that you would entertain? I mean, I don't know if there is anything that they want to add or not have seen part of.
If there's some suggestion that you or your organization, you know, would like to have us include, you present that to us and what will happen is, is that it'll be evaluated along with everything else and ultimately, a majority of the planning commissioners would vote on the overall package and either be in or be out based on the merits.
Thank you.
I just have a question though to that. Does your organization represent just what we were talking about today, the study, the water side, or does it also include the non-water side?
Non-water side as well. All 35 residences.
One to keep in mind, too.
Yeah, they'll be part of all of our discussions.
You know, going back to the basics, we want input. If you have ideas, share them, okay?
Gotcha.
You know, some may be great ideas, some may be terrible ideas, okay? That's the way it is, okay? And we'll evaluate them and work with you and we'll see what fits.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could too, just, Mr. Hancock, just since we've got your contact info, if and, you know, when we are ready to bring this back, we'll do our best to get you an email out before those letters get mailed so that if you can be kind of a point of contact, and I don't want to put too much on your shoulders, but we can kind of give you the heads up that, you know, we're going to be doing this again on X date and letters will be going out so that you can, you know, kind of inform all of the people in the association to the degree, you know, you see fit. So we'll, we'll do our best to make sure that we keep open lines of communication and at a minimum, again, we would redo a letter notification directly to everyone. But now that we've got a good point of contact, we'll use that too.
Thank you.
And timing, timing is uncertain. Okay?
Mr. Chair, just if I remember correctly, I think when we did the Hickory side, it was a little more than a year to get that process done. So I know our next timing isn't necessarily defined, but could you just outline the overall process if a change is going to happen?
If a change is going to happen, it'll be, it'll be determined by this commission after, after another, another round of work session, okay? The planning commission will hold. At that point, we will begin the process of actually formally changing the zoning ordinance. The first step in that process is a public hearing. Public hearing, the township will send out individual letters to everybody again saying, "Look, okay, we're now, we're seriously going to be changing the ordinance. Come and talk to us if you want to." Okay? So that process would happen. At that point, following that, depending upon the input we get, if there's no surprises and everybody seems, you know, contented, the planning commission would vote on that change. Okay? From there though, we're not the final authority. The final authority rests with the elected officials, the township board. So this recommendation would go to the township board for the zoning ordinance change as well as the change in the township map, zoning map. The township board then would, we would send with that, send to them a findings of fact that would go with this and they would say yes or they would say no. Okay? Based on the recommendation of the planning commission, I would expect as thorough as we've been and as much input as we've received, that the answer would be yes. But again, that's up to them. And that process, again, just tacks on more time into this. It's fortunate in all this that there is no crisis, there is no emergency that drives us to try to speed through this thing. You know, we want to be slow and systematic and thorough and that's the way it's going to proceed. Does that answer the question? Okay. Any other questions or thoughts?
I've got one more.
Oh, it's okay. No problem.
When you talked about the lots coverage from the house to the lot size.
Yeah.
Is that based on the township or is that based on what you use at Hickory Island company side?
I didn't quite understand. So in terms of.
Hickory Island company side, their lots are 35, 40 foot wide.
Right.
Couple hundred feet deep.
Yep.
And I think they have a setback, so that portion of their setback is not buildable. So that would, is that included in it?
In the lot area?
Yes.
Yeah, it's still a lot area.
So your criteria for 20% of the coverage for the house was, is acceptable, 37% of whatever we had earlier was not?
Right, right now it's 20% and there are, and I don't have it up, but I think there are 12 of the 29 homes exceed.
But I'm referencing back to the Hickory Island company side. Are all their homes in compliance or the majority of them?
All of them. We'd have to go back and check the study from that, but no. Again, it was the same, the same idea that I, we, the chairman kind of alluded to earlier and I tried to address is that when we have that, that extreme nonconformity in some of those instances, we can't set the bar, we can't make that the level to bring everyone into compliance because in, at least in my opinion, that does have the chance to affect the neighborhood and not in a good way.
Because you seem, you always referencing back to Hickory Island company study where their association had input into writing their own, their own zoning. And we haven't had any input. We're taking Hickory Island stuff and trying to apply it out to us. You're taking certain parts out, but does it also deal with the lot coverage?
But can I just, I think you misunderstand. What we've been trying to say is this all started with Hickory Island because of the way the island was originally developed and that because there were a lot of nonconformities that ended with people having to come to the planning commission or the zoning board to make any kind of updates, upgrades, changes, that they realized based on that, that really we needed to change the zoning because the problem wasn't with the properties in a sense, it was with the zoning. So applying it to Bayview side is only kind of as a template. And I think as Brian tried to kind of hint at in the explanation, but may not be strong enough in the language, is that it's just the template. They're not trying to copy what's going on at Hickory Island. It's, they're just using it as a template and then adding all the things that are specific to Bayview and, you know, there's no Hickory Island company to work with, there's no specific tight organization rules to work with. So this is really just a new zoning ordinance for your district with your input, but we're starting off with a template that has worked somewhere else. But we're not going to impose that template on you.
See, my concern is with the non-attached garage. I'm a homeowner that has a non-attached garage. We allowed Hickory Island to have non-attached garages. Why aren't we allowing that on Bayview?
That isn't.
It'd be nonconforming.
Well, because the character of Hickory Island, when Hickory Island was being discussed, the character of Hickory Island was massively already detached garages, okay? There was, there was no incentive not to make that standard because with 35, as you said, the 35-foot lots or whatever, that was the only way people were going to have anything and they were already there. On your side of the island, what was it, eight?
12.
12?
12.
12 out of.
29.
29.
But that includes sheds and whatnot. I don't have a shed, you know, that's.
The idea was, is that that currently, the bottom line is, that's not currently the character of your area. Okay? the character of your area, okay? There's not a majority-
My house was built in 1938, so it's been there.
But not yours specifically, but if you, if you do the distance of, of, of the Bayview side and you walk up and down the street, you don't see what you see on the Hickory Island side with every, every house having a detached structure sitting in the front yard. You don't see that. That's what the numbers show.
But the majority of your homes that have the attached garage were, were built more recently than 1938. That was, that was the style of the build.
Correct.
So-
The, the change to the ordinance is not going to make you remove your front yard garage.
No, but it may, may have an effect on me being able to do upgrades to my house in the future.
But the point, the point here is, is when, and when we make a zoning ordinance change, you have to think about it like this, and this is the way this commission does. If we allow something as, as an approved use, okay, you have to look at it from the standpoint that every house in that entire waterfront side now has one.
Yep.
Okay? What does that do to the character of that island, of that part of the island?
That's, that is the character of the island.
No, I would say it is not.
I, I disagree with you.
Okay, you do. That's fine.
You're making exceptions for one side of the island, but not for the other. That's, that's not right.
Okay, well duly noted. Additional comments? Yes?
29714 Bayview. I have one other question of the, are, of the ordinance being proposed. Are the other islands like Mamaso, Upper Lower Mamaso, Elba, South Point, any island like that, are any of them zoned beside Hickory Island as an R1F?
No.
Is there a proposal to look at those also?
No.
Why?
Because there has not been any issue from zoning board of appeals which would drive it.
So those buildings, they're all conforming then? Everyone who builds on Elba, everyone who's building on Mamaso, Upper and Lower?
I think the answer is, in, in all probability, not everything is conforming. But by the same token, you know, the zoning board of appeals doesn't see multiple applications coming in from these like, like we did from Hickory Island. And so that indicates that the zoning ordinance is fairly well aligned with what's there.
But I guess I get, and then my other question would be, how many multiple applications have come from Bayview?
Don't have that number.
So, right, I'm not sure, right, I'm just looking at the, and I understand the urgency, there's no urgency, but I'm just looking at, in terms of looking at all the islands and looking at why those, why that ordinance isn't being looked at when, if we don't, if we've only had two people in the last 10 years apply for a variance, say to build a structure or extend a structure, and now we're being, right, re-looked at to re-zone, I would assume that there's other non-conformities on other islands like Mamaso, Upper Lower, Elba, that also have come to the zoning board of appeals in the last 10 years, right, that also could be considered, I just don't consider that frequency, but I also think that all of those other areas should also be looked at if it's an issue of waterfront property and conforming.
If the planning commission determines that there is a need to re-address zoning districts, we will do so.
Okay.
Again, I think we just need to reiterate, if, if the people on Bayview decide that they're content with the way things are, this body is perfectly content to leave it as is. What's driving this is looking at the potential for there being a lot of restrictions on that community based on the current zoning that we're, you know, we think we can eliminate by, by changing the ordinance. But if, if everybody finds that they're content the way it is, then we're not trying to force this on you. I don't, I don't, I don't think any person on this commission looks to change ordinances because we, we want to. And on the other islands, if we were to look at those, it would strictly be based on that neighborhood. It would not be in reference to Hickory or to Bayview. It would be on, on an island by, neighborhood by neighborhood basis.
Thank you, Uta. Additional comments? Going once? Going twice? Thank you very much. We will move on. Uh, update from the planning consultant under the chair's report. Uh, Brian, are you going to talk about the, the? Okay, let's wait till the room clears.
Right, right, right. We just, the idea was-
Again, thank you, everybody. Okay, we're still in session, folks, so if you could take your conversations outside, we'd appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to give a, a couple of, of quick updates, some of which you've, you've probably seen just in your, your travels on the island, some of which, some of you are familiar with and some of you may not be at this point. So, Tasty Freeze, which you approved earlier this summer, well underway. I couldn't tell you the status of the internal renovation, but I, I do know the exterior, it looks like it's moving along. I know the, the outdoor patio and sidewalks were constructed. I drove by and saw that and I did not look to see if the, the building had been corrected yet, so I'm seeing shaking heads. So the project's not done, but, but it is in progress. So again, as you've seen, and, and hopefully they'll be, they'll be open and ready to go when, when things warm up again. Hopefully that's sooner rather than later. The Sunoco station also, obviously that one kind of dragged for a bit. There were some, there were some engineering issues that had to get worked out after plan approval and in advance of getting their permits. But again, if you've driven McCombs Street, you've seen that that's well underway and things are starting to happen there. So we're, we're hopeful that the progress continues on that one. The next two, only some of you are probably aware of. So we've had a, a number of meetings the past several months with the subcommittee of the commission, the officers of the commission, Jay, Steve and John, with some development and engineering professionals related to a piece of property on the West Shore Golf and Country Club. So they're looking at a, a pretty complex development plan for a portion of their property. We've met with them several times. We did essentially at the last meeting, the subcommittee felt they were ready for a pre-application conference to present their ideas to you and sort of outline the process, give you a chance to ask them questions. At the last minute, they did ask to be pulled from the agenda tonight because their, their, their PE, their, their design engineer was unavailable to meet tonight. He had a meeting conflict. So we'll continue to work with that group. And my expectation is that when we get to next meeting date, whatever we set, my expectation is to, to have them on the agenda. I will share with you, they, they, this is not coming from me, this is coming through them, you know, they are interested in getting it moving as quickly as they can. But I also informed them that the commission has a regular meeting schedule and this is not just like scheduling a subcommittee where we can meet any, any night of the week that, that we're available. So we will be looking at keeping our schedule to first and third Mondays and not looking to create special meetings and, and do things like that, which only tend to screw up people's schedules. So whatever we end up setting at the close of the meeting tonight for our next meeting, I'll inform them and we'll do our best to get them ready. They will have some submittal materials that you'll see in advance of that as well. So we'll keep you apprised on that one. And hopefully the next time you meet, if there's still a project there, they'll be ready to go. And then the last one is a more recent conversation that we will just now be bringing to the subcommittee level and then ultimately back to the full commission when time is right. John and I had a, a meeting last week with some, some of the township administration and, and a couple officials and some park representatives about the Sunrise Park on East River. There was a, or at least there's, there's a discussion about potentially constructing a, a permanent restroom facility at that park. There's been a lot of talk. It's gone back and forth. I, I was brought into the conversation to see what the ordinance issues might be. I relayed those ordinance issues, which essentially is, right now it's prohibited under current ordinance. I was then told that the project was not being pursued anymore anyway, only to about two weeks later, get a phone call that said, we want to talk about it again. So the close of that conversation was that we will, we'll start looking at some potential ordinance amendments text-wise that we'll discuss at the subcommittee level as we normally would, and then ultimately bring those forward to the commission at, at whatever time we think it's, it's ready. So we don't know exactly what form those are going to take yet. There's a lot of discussion about where we might want to go with it, but there are, anytime we're dealing with waterfront, whether it's a, a non-conforming lot study or whether it's for permanent buildings and structures, there, there's a lot of issues that we have to sort through, as you're well aware, before we're going to be comfortable presenting something formally that, that we're behind and supportive of. So we will keep you apprised of that as well. I, I don't know, again, depending upon when your next meeting is and depending upon when, when, when John and I can get that subcommittee together, that will sort of unfold as we go. If we have progress in time for your next meeting, we'll present it to you at that time. If we don't, we'll give you an update, let you know where we stand with it.
Perhaps an informal sign ordinance would be appropriate for that project.
Perhaps what?
An informal sign ordinance.
I think, just to give you a little preview of coming attractions about this, this West Shore project. It's massive and has multiple steps associated with the planning commission and the board. It involves a rezoning of single-family residential to multi-family. It involves the site plan for a 42-unit development. It involves a site plan for the relocation of a, of a maintenance facility to the opposite side of the course. It involves installation of a marina. And all of this is taking place under the, under the various ordinances. And it's, it's a very complicated thing to figure out how to, how to manage these, these various portions of the project. So we, we have, we've got a basic agreement on how we're going to do it. But it is going to be multi-step and, you know, it will take months in order to, in order to work through, months, with multiple trips back and forth to the township board. So complicated.
Just a quick question on that. Does that, at one point in time, there was, I think maybe an approved project for the boathouse? Is that now off the table?
No, the, the plans incorporate the opportunity for that facility still to be built, if it were ever to be built. Okay. Okay, additional comments or questions on any of that? Okay, then let's talk about our next meeting date. Brian, things on the book?
Well, we will obviously be working through Bayview. We will, we'll start a more formal review of the site condo you saw this evening and work with the applicant to address some of those concerns and questions. We'll see what they come back with in terms of revised materials and then a pre-app for that, that West Shore project. That's really all that's on the list at this time.
Okay, well, we typically, well, we don't meet in December and January is, is questionable because of holidays. I think, well, it sounds to me like we're at the point where we're scheduling for next year. Does anybody disagree with that?
I don't disagree, but certainly if something that was urgent would come up, I would imagine we would get back together if required.
Sure. Brian will keep us advised, that's the way, that's the way it works.
Yeah, my, my guess is the only thing that we would see would be that the, again, the, the West Shore group is, is anxious to, to get in front of you for their, their pre-application conference. That would be the, that would be the most pressing. And then depending upon what the site condo petitioner comes back with in terms of new information and revised plans, that would be kind of second on the list at this point. The, the Bayview study, I think, obviously is going to take a little bit more time. We've got to do some, some research and have some additional meetings with the assessor. So those would be the, the two that would be most pressing. So we'll just, we can see, we can set something if you want to jump all the way to, to January.
No, I, I think let's just, it's likely to be first of next year, but let's just wait and see what develops.
Okay.
We'll advise you folks and see who is available and go, go that route. Okay, does anybody else have any other points they would like to make?
I'd just like to remind everybody to go out and vote on Tuesday, November 6th, or get an absentee ballot and get it into the township hall by Tuesday, November 6th.
Absolutely. Do your civic duty, vote. Okay, turn in motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.